All right, the time is six o'clock. I would like to call this Springfield Local Schools Board of Education organizational meeting to order. Roll call. Mr. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Petrie?
Here.
Mrs. Frola?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to God for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item four, election of president. Nominations will be accepted for president of the board for 2023. I would like to nominate Cynthia Frola. All right. No other nominations?
He is better.
Some people say roll call. I'm Larry. Hey, you've got an agenda too, you know it's coming. I do. Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
I'm not supposed to bother myself.
Yes, you are. Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Congratulations, Cynthia.
Thank you.
All right. Election of vice president. Nominations will be accepted for vice president of the board for 2023.
I nominate Kenny Ray.
I second that. Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item six, appointment of board committees. President shall appoint 2023 committees as follows, and we have not filled committee chairpersons for the most part unless we would need them, and we can do that at a future date, if that's okay.
That's fine. So what I did, just for future dates?
Portage Lakes, don't we do Portage Lakes? We'll get to that.
We'll get to that.
Okay.
So what I've done is, just in case we ever do need these committees, and just so you know, a lot of boards do not have these committees already in place, it's just that some do. A lot of them have it as an administrative committee where the board members can be a part of it, because once you make it a board committee, then it has to go through the sunshine laws, and it has to be in public and everything like that, and it's for recommendations. They don't speak for the board, but they can help make recommendations. So one of the things was, you know, we have these different committees, and what do they really entail? Like, why would we ever need them? So I'm passing out to you. It's just a little job description of each of what the committees are, along with what PLCC is, and then what the legislative liaison's responsibilities are. So you can keep these for future use if we ever decide to need to fund a committee. And then I got them for you guys.
And those can be assigned by Cynthia, vice president.
But I'm, uh, thank you for doing this.
You're welcome.
Because I'm a big believer in, if you're gonna ask someone to do something for gosh's sakes, make sure they know what it is that you want them to do, because you're gonna get it. That way they can be successful.
Dave, are you still serving in Portage Lakes?
Yes.
Would you like to continue doing that?
I guess I would.
Okay. And how many seats do we have over there?
Two.
Okay, so?
We need another member.
We need another member to go.
She's rolling her eyes.
I approached Miranda.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd like to do it.
Okay. Then, as president pro tem, I would say we will insert Dave Hofer and Miranda Terry's name for Board of Education at Portage Lakes.
And they meet monthly, I think on Thursdays.
Thursday, third Thursday.
Third Thursday, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Miranda.
You're welcome.
And are we in need of filling the legislative liaison? We haven't. Have you been that?
I've done that, but it's refreshing to finally see the guidelines.
You wanna wait and see what we're gonna do?
We can wait.
Okay. Then should we vote on the appointment of the board members, or do they not need to be voted on because they've been appointed?
I don't think we need to vote on them because they've been appointed.
I'm gonna get this down here.
Just so you know, with the legislative liaison, that is something that really, that OSBA does really want to have every school board to have one. So as soon as we do determine who's going to do it, we need to contact them to let them know. Because there are certain copies of publications that they get to keep them up to date, and they wanna have their names on it. So let's not wait till, I mean, we could wait till even the next, since we're gonna have another board meeting this month.
Okay.
We could probably do it then.
Okay. Okay. Item seven, set date, time, and place of meetings. It is recommended that the regular meetings of the Springfield Local Board of Education be held on the third Tuesday of each month unless otherwise noted at six o'clock with locations to be determined. February 21st, 2023, March 21st, 2023, April 18th, 2023, May 16th, 2023, June 20th, 2023, July 18th, 2023, August 15th, 2023, September 19th, 2023, October 17th, 2023, November 21st, 2023, December 19th, 2023, and January 9th, 2024, second Tuesday.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Item, item passes. Item eight, yearly procedures. The following yearly procedures are recommended for adoption by the Board of Education. A, that the treasurer be authorized to pay all bills as presented, providing there are sufficient funds and purchase orders have been properly issued. A monthly report shall be presented to the Board of Education. B, that the superintendent be named purchasing agent. C, that the superintendent be authorized to apply for and serve as coordinator of federal and state programs as deemed necessary during the calendar year 2023. It is understood that a staff member coordinates the programs and reports to the superintendent. D, that the treasurer be authorized to request advance tax money from the county auditor as funds are available and payable to the school district. E, that the treasurer be authorized to invest in active funds with interest payable each month. F, that the board president, superintendent, treasurer, and business manager be bonded in the amount of $50,000 for faithful performance bonds. O R C 5705.412, O R C 3313.25, and O R C 3319.05. G, that the treasurer or designee be approved to do banking transactions. H, that the superintendent be authorized to approve professional meeting attendance and expense for the district personnel as deemed appropriate during 2023. I, that superintendent be authorized to approve unpaid leave requests for the district personnel as deemed appropriate during 2023. J, that the treasurer be authorized to make appropriations and amend the certificate of estimated resources as necessary throughout the year. K, that the rate of pay previously approved for board members maximum per Ohio Revised Code continue at the rate during 2023. O R C 3313.12. L, that the superintendent be authorized to serve as district representative to acquire federal surplus property from the Ohio State Agency for Surplus Property. M, that the treasurer be authorized to dispense with the reading of the minutes at board meetings, provided the minutes are presented to the board in advance of the board meeting. N, that the board establish a records commission as provided by law made up of the board president, superintendent, and treasurer. O, that the treasurer be designated as the public records designee for all elected officials.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Okay. Board service fund. Item nine, board service fund. It is recommended that the board service fund be established in the amount of $7,500 as provided by the Ohio Revised Code.
So moved.
Second.
So note that we've really never spent that much.
No.
Never hit that, we've never hit that figure.
No.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Item, item passes. Item 10, adjournment. It is recommended that the meeting be adjourned at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Organizational meeting is adjourned. I'm passing the gavel. Mrs. Frola, Mrs. Frola will bring the regular meeting to order.
Am I allowed to say I'm a little nervous?
That's all right.
All right. Calling to order, this Springfield Local School Board meeting of Tuesday, January 10th.
I have to get there.
Okay.
It's not letting me do the quick way, so give me a minute.
Long outlook back into blue sky?
No, it didn't. Just seem pretty much here.
Dustin, need your help, Dustin.
Okay.
We just need the magic fingers.
You did that.
No shame in going in.
Could've walked him in.
Could've looked at him something.
Right here.
About them, bro.
That's all I am.
What's it?
It's about them, bro.
Okay.
We need a roll call on bringing the meeting to order. Mr. Petrie?
Here.
Mrs. Frola?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Yeah.
Ms. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Is that everyone?
Okay. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to God for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, okay. So January is deemed by the governor as Ohio School Month recognition for all the work that everyone does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So inside your package, you have a certificate and a proclamation from Governor DeWine that I'd like to read. It says, "In the name and by the authority of the State of Ohio, whereas more than 700 boards of educations oversee and manage the personnel and properties of school districts throughout Ohio, and whereas school board members are elected to establish the policies that provide the framework for their schools, and whereas school board members devote hours, hours, of their time each week to provide leadership to their local schools, and whereas school boards fill an important role with members creating and monitoring district plans to make sure students have the tools and skills to reach their full potential, and whereas school boards maintain communications with all segments of their communities to keep the public informed of district activities, and whereas school board members advocate for the best interests of the students served in their districts, and whereas it is important that communities support school boards so that students receive the best education and are prepared to be leaders of tomorrow, and now therefore we, Mike DeWine and John Houston, Governor and Lieutenant Governor of the State of Ohio, do hereby recognize January as School Board Recognition Month on this first day of January 2023." And I had gotten a couple emails. Jenna Hanschall, she's an everyday reader and cafeteria at Springfield. She emailed me, and she says, "Please let the board," she says she thanks you for all that you do. And Bo Grubbs emailed me, and he wanted me to tell you that as a Springfield resident and teacher in our district, I would like to take a moment to say thank you to our school board members for their commitment, service, and their time for our community, but most importantly, for our children. Thank you. And me personally, I'd like to thank each of you for, for your commitment and your involvement in providing the best opportunities for our students, our families, our staff, and our community. And personally, for myself, I don't think I could have asked for a better board for my first stint as superintendent. You guys have been great, so thank you for all that you do, and you're, you should see a little recognition on the school board from the high school. So we thank you. Thank you very much for all that you do for us.
Thank you to everyone who's expressed that. I think as a school board member, I have learned, working with this group of board members, it's a good functioning relationship, I think, that we have, and I, you know, I think it will be good for the, we'll be able to do good things for the kids as we have in the past.
I think so.
So we'll start with board members informal. I just wanna say thank you for the confidence in asking or allowing me, or whatever, to do this role, and I will give it my best. Miranda?
Oh, you skipped all of them?
Oh, okay.
You got anything?
We started down there.
I was gonna, you know, I was gonna go around, sorry.
I just wanna say Happy New Year to everybody. I think one of the biggest things as a board, we, us three came and joined these two was to get the levy passed. So for 2023, that's, I think, the biggest goal here. Get more people involved, get the facts out there, the rumors squashed, and go after it. I mean, as a parent and a resident and a coach and sitting up here, they need it more than ever, not just our students, but our whole family. So hopefully we can rally some support and go after it and make.
I just wanna wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I feel that 2023's gonna be the year that we really start pulling ahead, so positive outlook on it.
I'll echo that. I think it's a year of rebuild. Congratulations, Shelley, on six months now.
Thank you.
At the helm. And there has been a notable difference.
Thank you.
Notable uptick in morale that I see.
Thank you.
And I echo Cynthia's comments on, we have worked together, and we have had differences, but we've worked together, we've worked it out. Little update from the state was what you have asked, that died in the lame duck session. That was where they were gonna split ODE into two sections. That died. It was a busy lame duck session. I have a recap, and then I'll send that out to all the members. We need a recap next month, and we can present that to the community.
Awesome, thank you.
I would just like to say thank you to the board members for the support that I had this past year. As president, we did our best, it's not been good enough, and so we're putting a lot of pressure on Cynthia here. And I was curious to see that the governor's proclamation was missing a whereas, whereas the state will legally fund school districts. I didn't see that one in there, and I thought maybe it should've been, but.
It'd be nice.
We're looking forward to a good year.
And I didn't give somebody to read, but I do have just an update. We have no students here today because it was a short two weeks, but so we will start back next, next month with our student recognition, and we have some student activities, things going on for us for next month. But just some sporting events that have happened. Our winner, athlete of the week recipients were Tyler Rice for bowling, Ashley Pickett for chair, Anthony Ahern for basketball, Brayden Farmer for basketball, Destiny Rogario for basketball, Avery Skegs for chair, Trenton Stevens for basketball, and Michaela Woods for chair. We had a big wrestling tournament here last weekend. It was the second annual Spartan Invitational this past weekend. Besides the fact that we took third out of 15 teams, which is exciting, everybody was very complimentary on how it was run. There were some hiccups with technology that was statewide, not just us, and people were very appreciative of how we carried ourselves with that. Some of our, Omar Leon, he was champion for 120 pounds. Lane Chapman came in third for 113. Gabriel Vance came in third for 157. Nick Holmes came in third for 165. Dominic Domastas came in fourth for 126. Joshua Basinger came in fourth for 285. Trevor Alfred came in fifth for 106. Kobe Watkins came in fifth for 144. Gavin Herden came in fifth for 175. And Keith Broccoli came in fifth for 190. And it's just really exciting that we have every weight class filled for wrestling.
That hasn't happened in a long time.
So that is really exciting, and the fact that we came in third out of 15, that was extraordinary. We did, we're supposed to have a junior high tournament, but that was on that Friday, and just for the safety, we, we had to cancel.
Do you believe it's been rescheduled for February 11?
Yes, yes.
I was at the tournament on Saturday, and I've never been around wrestling in all my years, but I worked the concession stand. We got there at 6:00 a.m., and I kid you not, there were boys at the concession stand at 6:30 after weigh-in getting hamburgers, sloppy chowder.
Oh, yeah.
It was unbelievable. There were hiccups, I will say that. It was amazing how they all worked together and how to use paper and pencil. One student that we missed for athlete of the week, Kayla Gasper just got it as well for girls' basketball.
Okay, awesome, thank you. And then some save the dates, August, not August, oh my gosh, it's not August.
Ooh, that would be nice.
It's not August, it's January. January 30th, Bowling Senior Night versus Streetsboro at 3:45. January 2nd, we had wrestling, I'm gonna guess that's February 2nd, Wrestling Senior Night versus Coventry at 6:30. February 7th, Boys Basketball Chair Sparkles Senior Night versus Crestwood at 7:00. 2:25 is the Spirit Spartacular Showcase at 12 o'clock. So I'll have that on your calendars, because I hear it's, it's a, it's a, it's a spectacular event, so for that. And then 3:15 is the sports, is the Winter Sports Awards Night. So a lot of good things going on with sports in our district, so that's exciting to hear.
It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the special meeting of December 13th, 2022, and the, and the regular meeting of December 20th, 2022.
So move?
Second.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes. At this time, citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome, and participants are limited to five minutes duration. Is there anyone who would, has any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we will move to a motion on paying the bills. It is recommended that the board approve payment of the bills for the month of December pending audit, and we have been provided with the, an exhibit with the bills to be posted.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Motion passed. It is recommended that this time that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for December 2022, and exhibits of those have been provided to the board.
So moved?
Second.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes. At this time, citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome, and participants are limited to five minutes duration. Is there anyone who would, has any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we will move to a motion on paying the bills. It is recommended that the board approve payment of the bills for the month of December pending audit, and we have been provided with the, an exhibit with the bills to be posted.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion pass. It is recommended that this time that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for December 2022, and exhibits of those have been provided to the board.
So moved?
Second.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Motion pass. It is recommended that the board accept or and approve the following personnel items. 10.1, employment of, as a classified substitute per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective the first day assigned, Michelle Burton. 10.2, employment of a classified employee, Amy Turnowski, as a 6.75-hour teaching assistant at Spring Hill Elementary per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective January 2, 2023. 10.3, athletic supplemental contracts. The following athletic supplemental contracts are asked to be approved, and these are per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure. Jody Burgess as varsity track head coach, Kevin Nash, varsity track assistant. Jody Burgess as varsity track head coach, Kevin Nash, varsity track assistant coach. Should I give the percentages?
I always have.
Okay, I'm sorry. With Jody, it was 13%. With Kevin, 11%. Going to James Brancheck, varsity track assistant coach at 11%. Aaron Skaggs, junior high track coach, 5%. Tim Burns, junior high track coach, 5%. Michael Cannavon, varsity baseball head coach, 11%. Shane Curry, varsity head softball coach, 11%. Paula Murphy, varsity assistant softball coach, 9%. Jason Holmes, junior varsity softball coach for the red team, 9%. Kendra Cox, junior varsity softball coach, red team, 6%.
And with that, we have Michael Cannavon. He came to the board meeting today, so he is our varsity baseball coach, and he just wanted to come so everybody can get a eye of who he is. So anything you'd like to say, Michael?
No, I don't have a speech.
Okay, I thought maybe there would be some baseball hoopla going on, but thank you for coming and thank you for joining the Spartan family, so we're excited to have you join us. Good.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Motion pass. It is recommended that the board deem transportation to be unreasonable, uneconomical, and impractical under present conditions for the individual listed in Exhibit 6.
This is just something from the state that if somebody needs busing and it's either too far or there's not a lot of people, all we do in lieu of transportation, and we give them a money amount for the year instead of providing them transportation.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion pass. We're 12, and it is recommended that the board approve a resolution declaring it necessary to submit the question of an additional tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation to the electors of Springfield Local School District pursuant to Sections 5705.194 to 5705.197 of the revised code.
So please jump in, Chris. This is a resolution to put a tax levy on the ballot in May. This is going to be, tell me if I'm doing anything wrong here, an emergency tax levy, and the difference between an emergency tax levy and a regular levy is a, emergency levy is submitted as a dollar amount, whereas a regular levy is as a millage. So whereas a regular levy, the millage goes up and down depending upon the property taxes, the emergency levy, we gave a set number, a set dollar amount, and that dollar amount stays consistent for five years.
Correct.
And it doesn't go up and down with, and there's only certain times that you're allowed to put an emergency levy on the ballot, and we were able to do it this time.
That's correct.
And the dollar amount is $1,739,000 for five years.
Which equates to 3.9 mil, so.
Right.
Want to make sure that everybody knows it's not any less or gone anymore.
Not anymore, it's 3.9 mils.
That's correct.
But it's a solid 3.9 mil, so it's not going to ever go up higher than that.
I will make motion.
I'll second that. Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Chris, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but this is, this is something that I have heard throughout my years, of when we put this on, when something like this is on, and it says in excess of the 10 mil limitation. Now, those of us who have had classes in school finance understand that, but people, you know, who aren't familiar with it, hear 10 mil.
10 mils is what they call.
Would you explain that?
When a school district is formed back in the day, you get 10 mils, okay? Most of the time, a lot of districts have inside mils and outside mils, okay? But unless we're a new district, you know, anytime you need to raise funds from the taxpayers, you have to put levy on them in excess of that original 10 mils.
The 10 mils is what we start out with?
Yes.
So to speak?
Long time ago.
Okay.
1881 or 83, something like that.
I just somehow felt that conversation might be illuminating.
So when I tell students if they want to take an extra class, take cursive, because there's going to be a ton of documents that are going to need to be read, that's all in cursive, and even, I grew up in cursive, it wasn't easy to read. I mean, cursive back in 1800 is different than the cursive now.
Yeah, it was done by.
We still have it in that big safe in my office.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I'll come in and read them.
Yeah.
It was done by Quill and Inquell.
In 1883?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's good. Did it pass? I forget.
Yeah, it passed.
The motion is pass. I'm moving to item 13, which is donations to the district. 13.1, Sparkle Chair has made a donation of $292.76 to purchase classroom equipment for a special education classroom at Spring Hill Elementary. 13.2, Batel Foundation Fund of the Columbus Foundation, a donation of $5,000 OSLN STEM Classroom Grant from the Batel Foundation Fund of the Columbus Foundation to Andrea Novicki's classroom for a generating classroom energy through empowering student leaders project. So that is, she received that this year.
Yeah.
And 13.3, the Batel Foundation Fund of the Columbus Foundation, there's a donation of $5,000 through the OSLN STEM Classroom Grants from the Batel Foundation of the Columbus Foundation to Andrea Novicki's classroom for a Moon Rover, Moon Rover Launch Springfield On Over project.
Okay, so a couple of things on this, the Sparkle Chair, do you know what the equipment?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so.
The last I heard was just the adaptive bikes.
Okay, so they're purchasing the adaptive bikes for the special classrooms. So for Andrea Novicki's class, the first grant focuses on continuing our exploration of renewable energy, particularly wind energy. The grant is going to allow them to take the project to another level by providing a competition-grade wind tunnel so students can more effectively prototype and test their wind turbine designs. They're going to be given data collection analysis tools to graph and measure the energy output, so that was for the first one. The second one focuses on space exploration. They started it in junior high to high school, and the grant is going to provide an all-terrain programmable robot, it's a Sphero RVR Plus, to our high school creative solutions and design students. It's going to provide toppers for the robots, which will allow students to build creations on top of the robots to compete tasks on the moon using their Sphero Littlebits library. So if you ever get a chance to go into the, to go see your classroom, there's a lot of great things happening with that, and I'd even like to get some of the elementary schools maybe to take, you know, take your classes in there to go see what's going on. I think that would be really great.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Before we move on, I'd like to, on the behalf of the board, congratulate Andrea for her positive efforts, because right, grant writing is not just a five-minute-and-done thing. It's a, it's an extensive process, and I think she needs to be congratulated for, for that, or I am. And moving on, treasurer's report.
Well, no charts today. It's more of a let you know what's going on. It's hard to believe we're getting audited again from the state. It seems like when we're done, they, they come back. And so we have our original crew before COVID, and it's a good crew, so it's easier to work when you know each other and what to look for, and we're confident that as we have in all of our audits, that we balance our books and everything is accountable for, and that's very important. We also continue to work with the state. We have a new person. The old person became a treasurer, and our new person is working with our team, and I would say that the team and, and the department from the state work well together. They're very demanding, but they're very helpful at the same time. Another set of eyes, suggestions. So that's going to continue until a levy is passed, basically. And so from a selfish standpoint and everybody else's standpoint, we hope and pray that I can exhale them out of the room, and I think they'll be happy to leave. There is, because of Essar Manisa starting to go away, they anticipate a glut of districts in the state of Ohio, unfortunately, so they gear it up for that. But everything else in, in the department is doing well. That's all, everybody's healthy and happy. All you can ask for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Central Office Report.
First thing this evening, I'd just like to remind everybody out there, we try and advertise these a lot, but we do have some job openings around the district. In the classified area, we have cafeteria workers, playground monitors, and a teaching aid position available, as well as positions in transportation, driving buses, and as monitors there. And in all the positions across the district, including substitute teachers, we're always accepting applications for substitute workers in all areas, including teaching there, and have a, a big need for those positions there so that we can staff appropriately, and as we're coming through these winter months especially, be able to fill positions as there's vacancies due to illness and other reasons there. So the most current job openings are available on our website at springfieldspartons.org/jobs. In addition to that, we will be, coming up, we've had some cold weather, snow, but it came during winter break, but coming up, I'm sure we'll have a day at some point where we'll need to call off, and just reminder that in addition to the standard news channels that we distribute that information when we close through, also be on our website or Facebook page, and sent to, we have voice message and text message to parents and guardians to get that information there. So we'll get that communicated out several different ways so that everybody is aware of that.
And to note that if we know that's going to do it, we're going to be very kind of our families and let them know early enough, so it's not the last minute, because there's nothing like canceling school the last minute.
While you're waiting for the bus.
Right, I would rather, I mean, just so you know, for me, I would rather err on the side of the safety than having people travel.
And to just build off of that and align with it, just make sure that students' final forms informations are up to date, because you do want that phone call, or your children want that phone call, when it does happen. So if there is any, any change in a phone number or another contact, if you update final forms, that would be best, that we get that updated, so we can make sure we get in contact with you. As another celebration for Springfield, we have not received the official letter as of yet, but we were told that we were supposed to receive it by today, so I'm surprised we don't have it in our hand, but we have been accepted into the MMR math pilot that ODE is doing. We do have one teacher, Mr. James Mills, who has, who thought he would like to take on piloting a brand-new course. This, it's called Mathematical Measurements and Reasoning, and it, we call it short, MMR. And MMR is an Algebra II equivalent for students as they go higher up into the math programs at the high school. It is for those students, Algebra II is more of an engineering-type course pathway. This one is for more people who are going into the social sciences and classes like that, so it's not as an in-depth math, let me rephrase that, because it is in-depth, it's just a different way. It's more about using realistic numbers in realistic situations. It is more of a hands-on. We did receive, we applied for that in December, and we were told unofficially that we have been accepted last week.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's going to be great for our students. So next, first, Student Services. We received our Ohio Special Education Profile this past week, and there, this past year there were nine indicators that they were looking to see how we did. We met seven of the nine indicators. The only two that we missed were the participation in our alternative assessment. So our students that have the most significant disabilities take an alternative assessment, and the state's wishes are that we are 1% or below of our population taking that test. We had 1.18% and 1.19%. And to me, I think if a kiddo needs to have that alternative assessment because of an intellectual disability or a multiple handicap, then it's not necessarily right for us to say, oh, we already had our 1%, so nope, you can't have that. So I think that is, you know, in a success that we're even, our numbers are where they are. So I was very proud of it, because this is, I feel like this is the first time the work that since I've been in Springfield that we've been assessed, so I'm excited for it, and it was a good report card.
So first of all, it's really hard to believe that we're going to be starting the third quarter. Next week, our grades close this Friday, and it's records day, so there's no school for the students. And then don't forget, on Monday is Martin Luther King Day, so there is no school on Monday. The winter edition of our Spartan Telegram is going to be published in the South Side Leader on Friday, January 13th, 2023, so please make sure that you take a look at that. One of the things that's going to be focused on in the Telegram is our, our district leadership team, which is made up of administrators and teachers. Every year, they pick an initiative, and this year, initiative is chronic absenteeism, and we talked a little bit about that last month. Just a little bit, you know, a fact out there that people might not realize, but just missing two days a month, which might not seem like a lot, but missing two days a month, either excused or unexcused, can add up to a child being chronically absent. And children, and then missing those two days can cause problems as they move on. So for example, children who are in kindergarten or first grade, if they miss the two days a month, they're less likely to be reading on grade level by the third grade. For older kids, being chronically absent is strongly associated with failing in school, even more than just low grades or test scores. And when a student gets used to not going to school, it becomes very easy for them, so they're more likely to be suspended or to drop out of high school. And there's also studies out there that say that chronic absenteeism can also be linked with teen substance abuse, as well as poor health in adults. So it's, chronic absenteeism is not a Springfield problem. It is a problem now that is hitting all education. It is a problem now that is hitting all education all across the United States. The idea of what happened after COVID just really put a whole different idea. And we know it's not just with schools, it's with jobs, it's with everything. It's just a different mindset. But we gotta get back into the mindset that school is important, and we do want your kids there, if they're well. I mean, there are reasons to keep your children at home. Please, if they're throwing up, do not send them to us, so you know we're. But if they're also absent, and if you know they're gonna be absent for a long period of time, please call your teachers, call your principal, call your counselor, and try to get the work so they can keep up, so when they come back, it's not something. So this is something, like I said, our, our district leadership team is working on. I think, you know, according to some data that we have already gotten from Spring Hill, and I think, Mrs. Murphy, you had the best attendance class?
Last week.
Last week, so congratulations on that. There are also, there's time to see an improvement in the absentee in the little kids. So it's just getting the word out there. Parents, you know, we want your kids here, we need them here, we miss them when they're not here, so.
I have to confirm.
Yes.
Do I read this?
Yes.
It's an internship.
I get it.
Items worthy of your note. January 12th, end of the second quarter, end of the first semester. January 13th, Teachers' Records Day, no school. January 16th, Martin Luther King Day, no school. February 16th, Shrop intermediate conferences from 3:30 to 7:30. February 20th, President's Day, no school scheduled that day. And February 21st is your next, the next regular Board of Education meeting at 6:00 p.m. right here in this place.
And I didn't mention, January 24th, because of the levy resolution, it has to be approved twice by the board, and it has to be done 90 days before the election, and that's by January 30th. So we will be having a special board meeting on January 24th here, and we're gonna start it at 5:30.
5:30?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, any citizen comments that anyone wants to make? So quiet. All right. Then, seeing no citizens' comments, it is recommended that the meeting be adjourned at this time.
Moved.
Second.
The motion.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farland?
Yes.
Thank you.